What's your allegiance?
Recently, I celebrated my 44th birthday. During those 44 years, this nation and its communities have faced numerous challenges. Many of those challenges have been overcome by the citizens of this country's communities working together. I hope that the outpouring of support for change through peaceful means that I witnessed Saturday in Ortstown will continue, that our citizens will work with police and community organizations to ensure that reform happens where it is needed, and that tragedies that occurred in Minneapolis and in other cities and towns time and again will cease. Uh, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any questions with respect to the meeting minutes of May the 18th? Motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Adversed by the member of council. First, Mr. Silverstein.
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Abetal?
I just wanted to give you guys an update on Carol, the fire department administrator. She was discharged today from the University of Maryland and is going to be recovering at home, which obviously is going to be a lengthy process. And I did want to wish both, while I have remembered, Ms. Cook and Mr. Engel in the election coming up, remember it's on June 9th, not June 2nd.
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry. Ms. Cook?
Last week, I delivered a proclamation to Maryland Neil for the Neighborhood Service Center recognition of the Community Action Agency and their 50th celebration. I also wanted to thank the fire department for leading the parade on Sunday for the 2020 graduates. That was really nice of them to do that. It was a great opportunity for the Easton High School kids to celebrate. And I was at the peace rally also on Saturday. It was quite, quite an event. I commend all those who came. It was peaceful. I think it's important that the town stand up against the violence against our African-American neighbors. I think it's important to be said.
Thank you. I've had a number of requests and questions from members of the community. I want to try to straighten it out. Tomorrow is a primary election. The special election for the president of town council is on June the 9th. Many people received ballots in the mail for they thought it was for the election. I've had no less than 10 of my neighbors come and ask me. So, once again, the town's special election is Tuesday, June the 9th, and the voting will take place in the Eastern Volunteer Fire Department from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And I echo both Mr. Abetal and Mr. Cook's comments about the special event on Saturday. Adversed by the mayor.
Mr. Engel, in your packet, you should have had a list of reappointments to the various commissions, Jennifer Williams to the Housing Authority, Grant Mayhew to the Historic District, and James Sebastian to the Historic District. Like to get your approval on these three folks so we keep them going on the various commissions.
Any questions, Mayor? Do we have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carried.
Also, I think I sent to each of you a couple of days ago, Mr. Van Enberg's recommendation for the crosswalk that's been requested in front of the library. If that's agreeable with everybody, would like to get a vote on that so he can go ahead and have a place.
I had one quick question, Mayor. I went over, looked at the library layout, and I see where the sidewalk dips so you can go across the road, but on either side are handicap parking. Is the intention then to move the handicap parking, just one space on either side of where we're going to put the new walkway?
They will be moved in order to keep them intact.
Okay. And make a motion for approval?
I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Got it, right.
Sure.
I know in years past, we've always talked about mid-block crossings and how they're not ideal. Are there extra safety precautions? I know there were the stop lines. Is there anything else we can do? Because it's a needed crosswalk, but as far as safety goes, is there anything else we need to be thinking about?
I don't think there's anything currently planned other than ample marking. The one spot where you turn off West Street on the Dover is a little bit close for the car to have to stop, but we'd like to see how that works. We're not, you know, setting anybody out there to get hit, but we feel like, or Rick feels like that's ample marking for the crosswalk.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe he had signs before and after, right? Yeah. And I know that I've received many requests from the library and citizens about this, so I think it's a good thing. Have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Also, in the last several days, we received word from the Board of Public Works that the $55,000 grant for the Northeastern Park lights was approved. So we now have a little over $100,000 in the bank for those light poles to be installed. And it still looks good that we'll get those in sometime later on this year. Also, Lorraine has indicated that a grant from the Maryland, is waiting approval from the Maryland Board of Public Works. This is for refurbishing Moton Park and the playground equipment there, and that grant's in the middle, in the neighborhood of $135,000 plus. And we haven't got it yet, but we did pass the first hurdle, and it feels like that it will be forthcoming. Also, we received a letter from the county council that they've sent a letter in turn to State Highway supporting our request for funding for sidewalks on 328. So that's moving along. And yesterday, Star Democrat, there was a notice on the back page about the declaration of emergency we had and the fact that we rescinded the cafe permit for street, eating on the streets. That was done. At the next meeting, you'll probably get the request to approve an extension to the declaration, the emergency declaration, to extend it out another month. But we did not, we did not remove the cafe permits. We temporarily suspended them until things settled down a little bit, and now that they can eat on the streets, it felt like it was time to go ahead and rescind that removal. So it's back in business. Dodd indicated earlier in his remarks about the tragedy in Minneapolis. Just a couple of comments. I don't think anyone who's seen the images of what is occurring in Minneapolis can say the actions were justified. Let's not let these issues undermine what we have going for us in Easton, the bevy of new jobs, new housing, and the willingness of the citizens to listen to one another. Let's show everyone we can work together and continue to make Easton the place we want to live in and raise our children. A few years ago, we had set up a group of citizens called Listening to Various Concerns that folks had throughout the town. And items brought up were quite varied, but efforts have been made to address each one of them. That includes the need for more jobs, the need for better housing for everyone, and the fact that we were really woefully short on park facilities for the kids and places for them to play. Maybe it's time that we get back together to assess the group, to assess these issues. The group included all sections of the county, police departments, clergy, teachers, et cetera. And tomorrow, we have our first meeting to start talking about revising this committee and at least get a report card on the previous activities that were requested, where we stand with them, and what we may need to do to further us along. We do not condone these activities that are going on, and we don't want to have them in Easton. So let's get ahead of the curve and get things done, done the right way. And that's my comment.
Thank you for those comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, addressed by the town manager.
I have nothing specifically for the agenda this evening. However, I would like to remind all of our residents that the 2020 census is occurring townwide. We've currently got a mid to low 70% response rate to that census. It's important that we try to get that as close as we possibly can to 100%. It represents funding from both the state and federal sources that make their way to the town of Easton. So if you haven't already completed your 2020 census, please find it and report it back to the federal government. Thank you.
Are there pockets that are underreported?
The pocket between Washington Street and Easton Point right now is one of the lower, although they're all in that upper 60s to mid 70s. We're doing well, but we're still a little ways away from, you know, a good 100% achievement.
Thank you.
Any questions, town manager? Mike, sir?
You're welcome.
Addicted to town council.
Just quickly, you mentioned that the election is next Tuesday, June 9th. The deadline for requesting an absentee ballot is tomorrow, Tuesday, June 2nd. They need to call the town office at 410-822-2525 to request an absentee ballot. There will be in-person voting on the 9th, so people can go to the firehouse and vote in person if they don't get an absentee ballot. And there will be social distancing measures in place. They're supposed to wear masks when they come to vote. So there are a couple of different options, but I hope, I'm sure there's some confusion with the Maryland primary election, so we hope that people understand that if they need an absentee ballot, they need to make a request and call the town to do that and forecome in person.
And ballots have to be received by, absentees have to be received by Tuesday or Wednesday?
Wednesday at 4 o'clock is when the Board of Canvassers will meet to count the ballots. So it has to be postmarked by Tuesday, but it has to be received by Wednesday. The way the mail's been lately, you probably want to err on the side of mailing it sooner than that, but.
Yep.
That's all I have for now. I have many other things coming up.
Oh, yeah, you're good. She has a big agenda tonight. Okay, thank you. Next agenda, Mr. Ken Gozell, President/CEO, University of Maryland Medical System.
Stand here?
Yep, right there.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I appreciate it very much. And I just wanted to also take a second to thank the town of Easton and Talbot County for your gracious support during these very challenging times with the worldwide pandemic that we know is COVID-19. As you can imagine, our hospital system has been under an incredible amount of stress, but as you've hopefully seen through advertisements and through communications with members of our team throughout the community, they are truly our healthcare heroes that represent our community members, and they're going above and beyond every single day to support the needs of our community. So I can't thank them enough for all the hard work our team is doing every single day, and I can't thank the town and county enough for your support and outpouring of love and support for our organization and for our team members. It has really lifted our spirits at times that have been very, very difficult for us. So thank you very much for doing that. I'd also like to say thank you to the council for sharing Mayor Willie with me every once in a while. We get a chance to meet about once a month or so, and we have coffee with Corey Pack as the president of the Talbot County Council, and I get an opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on at Shore Regional Health. And I listen to the mayor and Corey about what's going on in the town and county, and we make sure that we open the lines of transparency between us and answer questions to make sure we're all aligned with where we're going as a community that we serve. And with that thank you to you, I'd like to thank the mayor for his time and his support of Shore Regional Health. He comes very well-prepared, he comes with great questions, and takes back that information and hopefully communicates that effectively with you. Lastly, I'd just like to take a second to thank the mayor for his words this afternoon. This is a critical time for our nation, and when you have leaders like yourselves and the mayor who take the time and energy and effort to listen, that preempts so much unrest and so much uncertainty and so much lack of transparency and perceptions of what's going on in government, in business, and in local communities. And it's work. It takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of effort, but in doing that work, I think it pays dividends significantly to the communities we serve by listening, reacting, and responding, and helping shape the future that we serve. So thank you for doing that. I think it's incredibly important, and anything the hospital can do to support you in your endeavors, we'd be happy to be at the table with you to lead through these challenging times. So thank you. With that, I thought I'd just spend a few minutes giving you an update on what's going on at Shore Regional Health. My update will not focus a lot on COVID-19, but certainly during the question and answer session, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the pandemic and our reaction and response to it. My thought, though, was to give you a high-level overview of the Shore Regional Health system and the progress we're making towards our strategic plan as your healthcare system for the five counties of the Midshore. And when I start with the strategic plan, there's a number of elements that are incredibly important to know. And first and foundational is that Shore Regional Health is the five-county health system here on the Midshore. But equally importantly, we are part of the University of Maryland Medical System. And with that alignment with the University of Maryland, we've gone from a small, three-hospital, five-county, 2,000-employee organization to a statewide, four-and-a-half-billion, 30,000-employee-based system. We are part of that family, and that comes with many, many benefits that benefit our community every single day. And that is the strength and size and scale of the University of Maryland Medical System, the expertise that come with such a large system, and the liaison of relationship that we have to provide our community with the highest levels of care that we possibly can imagine, right here in the state of Maryland. So it's very, very important that our plan that we have locally and that we're advancing locally is consistent with the University of Maryland Medical System's plan because we're all one system and we all need to move in one direction. So that's foundational to our success, and that's foundational and it's inherent in our plan that we've established this year, last year, and moving forward. It's incredibly important. But I'd like to also, I know we want to talk a little bit about the replacement hospital at Easton today, but I'd like to put it into context for you as part of our annual operating plan so that you can understand the full framework of what we're working on. So, if that's okay, it'll just take a few minutes, but I'll go through each of the five major goals that we have at Shore Regional Health. And I think this is important to know because it's not just about a new hospital. We can build the best hospital imaginable, but if we don't provide the highest quality, most patient-experienced care and service, no one will ever use it, and I won't be here to talk to you in the future. So certainly don't want that to happen. But in order to make that happen, we have to achieve our five goals. And the first major goal that we have at Shore Regional Health is ensuring that our patients' needs are met first. We put our patients' needs first, and how do we do that? High-quality care, safe care, and a great experience. That's what we strive to accomplish as goal number one. That's our North Star, and it's what we're focusing on. And how do we measure that? How do we know that Shore is providing high-quality care in comparison to the rest of our competitors in Arundel Peninsula or the rest of the state of Maryland, or even the country for that matter? There are national and local and state indicators that tell us how well we're doing with quality of care at Shore. And some of them are national, like the Medicare five-star rating system. If you're a Medicare recipient, you know that they rate hospitals and providers on a star rating system. Five is the best, one is the worst. Everyone's striving for that five. Shore Regional Health is working towards that five, and most recently are at a four-star rating with the Medicare system, and striving to get that fifth star so that we can ensure that all of the things that Medicare says that are important from a quality, safety, and patient experience aspect are being met. It's critical to our success, so we're striving for that. Leapfrog is another national benchmark that says, how is Shore Regional Health doing with respect to other hospitals across the country? They go through an A, B, C, D, and E rating. E is the worst, A is the best. Our leapfrog rating as a healthcare system on the shore is a B, and we are, again, striving for that A score, and I'd hope that when I'd come back next year at this time, I can tell you we've got five stars with Medicare and an A rating for leapfrog. We are that close to achieving those scores. And those are national scales that the hospital industry knows about, that we focus on to share with our communities and say that we are providing the best care possible. So critically important. Again, if we can have, we can have the best buildings and services, but if we don't offer the best care, no one's going to use us for our services. So those are things that we focus on, but let's take the plane down a little bit to locally. How, hospitals often measure themselves by how many times we're harming our patients. Believe it or not, the hospitals are a dangerous place to come in and receive care, and at times, hospitals harm patients while they're there. Patients may get infections when they didn't come in with an infection. Patients may have procedures done on the wrong appendature. There could be a number of things. Patients could get C. difficile or other hospital-acquired conditions while they're there. Our goal is to strive for zero events. Zero, which is an incredible challenge to try to overcome. But I'm here to tell you that over the past several years, we have dramatically reduced the number of harm events within our system. We track it, we measure it, we understand why it occurred, and we fix it and prevent it from happening again, to the tune that we're almost in single digits now over the course of a one-year period with how many times we harm patients, which is national and state and national industry-leading numbers. So we're going to continue to strive and to focus on that. So goal number one is putting our patients' needs first. We focus on safety, quality, and the patient experience. We're going to continue to try to excel on the measurements that tell us that we're highest-quality care provider in the country. That's what we're striving for. The second goal that we talk a lot about is innovation and clinical integration, and that's important to us because we are a rural healthcare system. We have to be innovative, and we have to integrate our care and our services with other facilities because we can't be all things to all people. So let's talk about innovation for a second. Telemedicine is the one key area where hospital systems like ours with 2,000 square miles of geography is our primary service area, three hospitals, an emergency center. We don't have the human resources that it takes to support providing care on a 24/7, 365 basis for the population size that we serve. It's incredibly challenging to sustain that, and it's incredibly costly to ensure that those providers are available. So telemedicine is one success story that we've utilized to address the deficiencies in provider coverage that's incredibly challenging for us to provide. So our telemedicine numbers are increasing dramatically. So it's those kinds of technological advances that we operationalize that provide access to care for our patients. And when you talk about clinical integration, how are we integrating clinically with the University of Maryland Medical System? How are we becoming a better organization by being part of a larger system like Maryland? It's through that clinical integration technology, like becoming a member of the Greenbaum Cancer Center, which is a nationally-recognized cancer program right here in Baltimore, and having Shore being affiliate or a member of that organization tells us that we meet the criteria that promotes that national designation right here on the shore. We're striving to achieve that, and our goal is to get that designation and become part of that affiliation within the next year or so. So it's those kinds of alignments where we've got school of medicine physicians coming to the eastern shore and providing care for our patients here locally. That clinical integration of the patient doesn't have to go to Baltimore for every aspect of their care. They can get most of it here in Easton or in Talbot County, and when they need to get that procedure done, they can go to Baltimore for that care and then come back to our community for that post-care. That's the clinical integration that we're working on. We're all operating now under the same platform, so our hospital information system talks to each other. All of the information that's shared from one facility to the next is available. So not only are we making a clinically-integrated network on the shore with the three hospitals and the five counties that we serve, but also with the University of Maryland Medical System as well. So incredibly important and a long-term play, long-term strategy for us to sustain high-quality care and to promote great access to care as well. And that's our third goal, access to care. I'm going to hold off on that one because that's where the replacement hospital comes into place, and I'll talk about the fourth goal real quickly, and that's team strength. Team strength. As I mentioned earlier, our team of 2,500 team members here on the shore is Shore Regional Health. They provide the care every single day, 24 hours a day, to our community in need. They are the true healthcare heroes. Our jobs as administrators are to facilitate getting the resources our team needs to provide the care and then get out of the way and let them do what they do best, which is provide awesome care for our community. So team strength is important. Having an alignment of our team with our organization and making sure we listen, we understand, we react, and we respond, and we plan for future collaborations and integrations of our team is incredibly important to us, just like it is with the medical staff as well. We've got over 400 providers on our medical staff just at Shore Regional, doctors, nurse practitioners, you name, a variety of medical professionals that help provide the care that we provide here on the shore. So it's critically important that we listen to our medical staff as well and proactively plan and strategize for their future. And then finally, the fifth goal is financial strength. We cannot do the things that we can do here at Shore without being a strong financial business and a strong financial organization. And we've had our ups and downs over the last several years with regard to our finances. Pre-COVID this year, we were on one of those upswings where we were hitting our budget through February of this year, and then COVID hit. And like all other hospitals and like most businesses around the country, we took a major and significant hit to our bottom line as a result of COVID. But we did that with some intention in mind, and that intention was that we were going to do our level best to keep our team members employed, keep our team members whole as much as possible, and not experience some of the things that you may be reading about in other hospitals around the country, which is layoffs, furloughs, reductions in force, cutting of team member salaries, all of those things that really don't create team strength between an organization and a team, especially during these challenging times where we're asking them to do more. We're asking them to be more heroic than they usually are. So in the face of COVID, even with the recognition that there will be a financial hit associated with this, we, as all of UMS, not just Shore, but all of UMS, have worked hard to promote the team members that are doing the work and not have to do some of the financial, make some of the financial decisions that many other hospitals are making around the country. And we're going to do our best to continue to do that through the rest of the COVID experience. But that's important for this group to know, I think, because as you base your foundation on our long-term success, it has to be predicated on those five goals, and that's putting our patients' needs first, innovation and integration, access to care, team strength, and financial stability. Those are our key goals. So let me back up for a second and talk about access to care. Where you sit, you may be concerned about one potential component of that access to care, and that's where we are with the replacement hospital in Easton. But as the CEO for the local healthcare system, I have to understand and appreciate the entire scope of services that we offer and our capabilities to provide those services in the facilities that we have in place. And in many regards, they're all moving in alignment. They're all moving at the same time, and they're all moving together that are going to ultimately create the big, the net win for the system. And I think it's important to know that because as part of the Maryland healthcare industry, Shore Regional Health, a three-county, a five-county, three-hospital, one-emergency-center system, gets pretty much one reimbursement type from the state of Maryland. So we don't get a piece of reimbursement for Easton Hospital, one for Chestertown, one for Dorchester, one for Queenstown, one for our outpatient services. All of that pretty much comes under one umbrella for the entire Shore system as part of a regulated global budget reimbursement process. And we have to manage all of our resources within that lump sum bucket of money from the state agencies. So when we make decisions about, do we build a new hospital or don't we, it's got a consequence on the other things that I just mentioned that are part of our strategic plan. So when we talk about access to care, there's three major things that we're working on that are all happening in tandem together. The first is our plans for the Cambridge-Dorchester County hospital system there. Cambridge Hospital's on the waterfront. It's costing us millions of dollars to just renovate and repair that facility to keep the lights on, the plumbing working, and the electric working. Not a good use of resources, especially when you're trying to save for building a new hospital. So it takes a vision, it takes a strategy, and an execution on that strategy to make a new plan for Dorchester County, again, all under the responsibilities of a global budget reimbursement plan. So our plan, convert the hospital there to a freestanding medical facility, relocate that, those services off of the Chop Tank River, about a mile into Route 50 in Cambridge, and open a new two-story, 85,000-square-foot building. That plan is underway. All of the state approvals have been received, all of the permits have been acquired, we've picked a contractor for that project. We're starting to bust up concrete as we speak, and we're looking at constructing this building and opening it sometime in the late summer, early fall of next year. That's an important step in the process because we are closing that hospital down and relocating the services and expanding some of the services for that community that we serve. But as you'll know, as you know, there are inpatients in that facility right now. There's medical surgical, telemetry, ICU patients there, and there's also inpatient behavioral health patients as part of the Dorchester Hospital. Our plan, in addition to relocating the services to a freestanding, is to move those inpatient beds to our Easton Hospital here on Washington Street. So that's part of the process, and that has to happen in tandem so that when we open the new freestanding, all of the patients that would have been housed as an inpatient in Dorchester County would be reassigned to Easton. That's going to take some construction of our Easton facility. That's going to take some renovations of space, refurb, of additional space to make it accessible to those beds that are coming up. And it's about 30 beds that we're going to take from Dorchester County and move them temporarily into Easton. So that is also underway, and that will happen at the same time. So late summer, early fall next year, close the Easton, I'm sorry, close the Cambridge Hospital, reopen the freestanding medical facility about a mile down the road, and relocate the inpatient beds there to the Easton Hospital on Washington Street. That's step one of our service delivery plan. Step two is our Chestertown facility. As you know, Chestertown is our northernmost up in northern Kent County. It's a good hour drive from that hospital facility to Easton. It's a good hour drive from that hospital facility to Easton, and many of our patients are transferred to Easton for care from Chestertown. And we believe at Shore Regional that it's appropriate to maintain hospital services in Chestertown. It's just a matter of right-sizing that facility with regard to the needs of the community. Average daily census there is about 10 patients per day. So as you can imagine, it's incredibly challenging to staff 24/7, equip, maintain a facility and a building for those patients in that facility and that community. But we believe it's a necessary need for the five-county region because of the distance from Kent County to the rest of our healthcare services, especially here in Easton, where it's the regional services that most are offered. So we are working with the state. The state has defined a couple of options for us to consider, and that is to create what they're calling a Maryland Rural Hospital. It's kind of what's being offered there, but it's streamlined for what's truly needed for the community that we serve there. It's similar to a critical access hospital, so if you've been outside of Maryland and you've heard that term, it's very comparable to a critical access. About 25 beds, select number, amount of services that are offered, and about a four-day length of stay for patients in that facility. So it allows the community to maintain their hospital there, but right-sizeds it and puts the appropriate services there as well. So that's the plan for our Chestertown facility. The state has given us the tools to do that, and now we're working with the community and the state to adopt that concept in Chestertown. It will take a lot of work between the vision that the, or the tool that the state has given us to use and the execution on that tool. There's a lot of state agencies that have to buy in, the community needs to support our plan. The plan has to be financially feasible in order for this to work, but we are moving full steam ahead with trying to answer each one of those questions and make sure that we right-size the services up in our Chestertown and Kent County community. Because again, what we do there has an impact on our overall Easton financial strength. So it's important to get that result. The timing for that resolution, we're shooting for for July of 2021. So around the same time that the Cambridge project should come to fruition as well. Now, all of that said, the third and final major leg in the stool is the Easton Replacement Hospital here. As you may recall, we filed a certificate of need back in 2018 for the Easton Replacement Hospital, and a lot has happened since then, specifically COVID-19 around March of this year. Before COVID, we were working, moving forward on looking at the facility, making sure that it was sized appropriately, because in our world, as you know, number of beds are going down, hospital utilization is going down over time, not just on the shore but across the country. So we had to adapt to make sure that it's right-sized, and honestly, the state will require that it's right-sized. They're not going to let us build a new hospital that's oversized because increase in rates are what's going to help pay for the facility. So working hard to evaluate that project, make sure that it's cost-effective, make sure that we get in, when we get in front of the commissions and seek their approval, that they're going to approve it because we've taken the effort to make sure that it's right-sized and right-serviced for the community that we serve. So that's a lot of work that we've been doing, and then COVID hit. And with COVID hitting us in March of this year, that has caused us to shift gears and focus on that worldwide pandemic, but to also ensure that whatever we do as far as the new hospital is concerned, it addresses some of the things that we've learned from COVID, and we're applying those same principles to Cambridge as well. So working hard with the planning stages of the new hospital to make sure that it's adaptable to some of the things we've learned, as we also right-size it and phase it so that we can afford it now. But with COVID hitting, that has caused a significant financial burden, not just on Shore and not just on UMS, but honestly, for the entire state of Maryland. So we are nowhere near through COVID at this point. We are just learning of the financial impact that it has had on Shore over the last two months, and for the foreseeable future, we can continue to see that it will have a negative impact financially on us. So we are not saying today that we are no longer building the hospital. What we are saying today, though, is that we need to clearly understand the financial implications of COVID before our Shore Regional Board will continue to approve moving that project forward and before the new UMS Board, which has just been assigned by the governor of the state of Maryland, understands and appreciates our strategy for this new hospital and approves the concept of the cost in, as it sits within the five-year capital plan for the UMS system. So a lot of work that we need to do is to understand the COVID implications and also ensure that the strategy that we've developed for the new hospital meets the needs and expectations of the new UMS CEO and the new UMS Board as well, and we'll continue to do that over the next several months. So those are the things we're working on, all with the intent of succeeding on all three, which is opening the FMM in Cambridge, relocating beds to Easton, resolving the Chestertown acute care hospital dilemma with the Maryland Rural Hospital and an Aging and Wellness Center of Excellence as we open the regional medical center here in Easton down the road. So that's our plan, and that's predicated on the other four goals that I've defined, and hopefully it gives you a sense of who we are and what we're working on. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now about any of that or anything else you want to talk about.
Ken, on COVID, is money being put into the federal government budget being passed by Congress that reimburses the hospitals so that at least they have some financial stability?
That is correct. We have received, we have applied for and have received funds for lost business, if you will, similar to the PPP grants that have been given, but that has paled in comparison to what the need is. But what's very interesting, though, is the state of Maryland has a very unique reimbursement system with the two state agencies that oversee healthcare. And while we may have an impact in fiscal '20 because of COVID and the gap between cost of operations and PPP or money, grant money that we receive, the state is looking hard at that right now to determine, okay, fiscal '20, which for us ends on June 30th, is going to have X impact. How do we address that moving forward in fiscal '21, which starts on July 1st? I believe with the intent, at least, of making it us whole over that two-year period. So while we may have a negative impact in '20, we're hopeful that '21 will balance itself out through the state agencies that represent us. More to come on that, and they're trying to gauge the impact as well, but definitely have applied for and received funds, and we'll offset those with state support from the agencies that serve us.
You're able to do procedures now that you couldn't do before.
Yep.
So hopefully, you know, that's going to start moving some cash back through.
Absolutely. You're referring specifically to really some surgical cases. When the governor basically put restrictions on, we restricted all but emergent surgeries. And that, that was, a majority of what we do is more urgent or elective. So when you stop that on a dime, that's going to have a major financial impact on our system. As the governor reopens the state and allows for some expansion of those services back to the system, Shore Regional and UMS have been very prudent about how we do that, but definitely with an eye towards patient safety, team member safety, and then our capabilities. Do we have enough PPE, personal protective equipment? Will that PPE impact our care for our inpatients that really need it? How do we balance that need? And how far do we go down that surgical line in order to meet our patients' needs and have the surgeries done, but also do it in a very safe manner for the patients and team members? So we have reopened our surgical cases. We are methodically working through the schedule to try to get as much of the backlog refilled, but it's going to take some time because even with us wanting to open the doors, there's so many operational changes that have to take place, just like any business, now that the social distancing, the cleaning between cases takes much, much longer. So you're not as productive as you were pre-COVID. So a lot of work being done, but we're still utilizing our resources as best we can to close that gap. And then that will have a financial impact on us. The more we can do in OR cases, the more outpatient business we can do, that's going to have a positive impact on our bottom line. So we recognize that, but working through it safely as well.
On a personal level, I've had need to use your emergency room over the course of the last couple of months on three occasions, and I can only tell you that everybody has been extremely professional. Every person, from the person who checked me in to the nurses, to doctors, everybody else, did an outstanding job. And, you know, there's always concerns in communities about wanting to go to the local hospital, and I can honestly say that I got nothing but excellent service and rated accordingly on my surveys.
Thank you.
So I really, really appreciate having that available to us.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. You know, the physicians, the physician providers come from the University of Maryland School of Medicine, so they are as good as they get from across the country. Nurses and techs are our team members that are local, who have grown up on the shore for the most part, and to provide care for the communities that we live with and serve. So thank you for those kind words. I'll also take this as an opportunity, since I understand we're filming today, is to share that, you know, our message to our community is that please don't wait. If you've got an urgent healthcare issue that needs emergency services, please call 911. Please utilize our, we are open, we are safe, but, you know, we don't want people to delay care because they're fearful of coming into the hospital. It's essential that if you need the care, you please utilize the services of your local hospitals. It's critically important because we don't want to get to a point where you're waiting too long, and then it causes you much more anxiety and much more recovery time than it would have normally had you come into the healthcare system first and sooner. So thank you for doing that. Thanks for allowing me that opportunity to share that message to our community.
I've got a couple of questions, because I don't like being caught by surprise, and I know you don't. We don't know what's going to happen next, I'm assuming.
We do, with regard to COVID?
Yeah.
We do not.
So I'm assuming that you're keeping that new facility up the back of the hospital there for a while, and you're stockpiling PPP, PPE stuff so you can be ready for catastrophe?
Yes. One of the things the governor asked us to do early on, all hospitals in the state, was look at your surge capacity. And he'd like to add so many more beds in the state of Maryland and so many of those ICU beds, he'd like to expand on those as well. So he put the mantra out to all the hospitals, we've done that. We've looked at all of our surge capabilities, we've increased our capacity, and in some regards, as you've mentioned, we built modular tents outside of our facilities at each, at each hospital. So Chestertown, Easton, and Cambridge have a modular facility which will allow us to expand our care if needed. Now, we haven't used those tents yet, but we do intend to keep them because we don't know what's going to happen. Our fear is that there'll be a second surge and potentially even a third surge, as a lot of the experts are saying is likely to happen. And that could start to happen July, August, and then in the fall, and then who knows what happens when the flu season comes back around. So the state has graciously offered us to use those modular tents. They've come and built them on our campuses. We've got them ready to go, and we are storing as much PPE as possible, but not, not holding it to provide the care that we needed, as I mentioned earlier, but certainly judiciously using it so that we make sure that we've got it when needed. But we think there's going to be a second surge. We think there's likely to be a third surge, and we are planning for that inevitability and preparing for that. Hopefully, it's not going to happen, but you plan for the worst and hope for the best. That's what we're doing now.
Any more questions?
Yeah, a couple. Not related to COVID, but you had mentioned telemedicine. So has that been successful, and have you had issues? Because broadband access around here is spotty at best, unless you live in one of the communities. So how successful has your telemedicine program been?
Great question. Thank you for asking that. And that's one of the silver linings in this COVID pandemic is our increased use of telemedicine capabilities. You know, quite honestly, we've used telemedicine limit, on a limited basis before COVID. We used it for our emergency department when we wanted to hook up a specialist at the University of Maryland so that a child wouldn't have to go to Baltimore in the middle of the night. We can dial into a pediatric specialist in the ED there and have that communication. We've used it for our ICUs, our most sickest patients with the medical center as well to access those expertise for our ICU patients. We've used it for behavioral health. But my biggest challenge was before COVID, how do we operationalize telemedicine even further and faster? My concern was that the public wouldn't accept it. They wouldn't use it as much, especially here on the shore. But I know that we've got transportation issues. I know we've got access issues. So I know it's the right tool, but we just weren't sure of how successful it was going to be from our community, who was going to access it, but also from our providers, who aren't really accustomed to using screens and microphones to communicate to patients. They're hands-on for the most part. But the silver lining with COVID has been we have adopted telemedicine in our primary care offices, in our specialty care offices, to the tunes of thousands of visits per month being done here on the shore through telemedicine. And that's because our providers have embraced it and our community has embraced it as well. I've not experienced a lot of concern yet about broadband issues and access issues, but I do know that my apprehensions have been addressed through COVID, and our providers are now supporting it, and our community supports it, which helps me because we have a huge access to care issue. So we're going to continue to use it post-COVID and expand our capabilities moving forward, but it's really been a wonderful addition to our service line.
I think COVID has just pushed a lot of the technology that may have been looking down the road. I think it's pushed it interface much faster than anticipated.
Absolutely. And thank you for being at the forefront for getting broadband access to our communities. You know, Talbot County and Easton has been one of the better communities in the state of Maryland that have provided access. I know we're limited to last miles in many cases, so thank you for doing that. I know it's costly to get that last mile done, and it's a challenge to do that, but I know you're working hard on making that happen, so thank you.
I have one other question, though. The mental health facility that you have in Dorchester County that you're moving up to Chestertown, can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure.
And then in your decision to move it all the way up there as opposed to moving it to Easton, which is a little more of a central location?
Okay.
And then does that, moving those beds up to Chestertown, is that how you go from your average of 10 beds in Chestertown to 25 for your new facility?
Okay.
And is that a new or rental facility in Chestertown? I guess there's a lot of questions.
Lots of questions, but let me start with a clarification. The first clarification is all the beds that are in Cambridge today are moving to Easton. So the behavioral health beds that are in Cambridge today are moving to Easton. At one point in time, we did think about relocating them to Chestertown.
Okay.
For the access issues and for the efficiency issues of the Chestertown community. But we have since decided that it's in the best interests of our community and our healthcare system not to relocate them to Chestertown, but to relocate them to Easton.
My apologies.
So you've got, that's an important clarification, but you're absolutely right. We were at one point considering that. We've now gone back to all 30 beds, behavioral health and inpatient med surg tele-ICU to Easton's campus here on Washington Street. And important to note that those beds then will get transferred to the new hospital once they're built. So we're building the additional beds from Cambridge into the new hospital as well. So they will include those beds. But the service that's being offered is really just inpatient behavioral health services. So there are behavioral health patients that need inpatient care as well. We have an average daily census of between 10 and 12 patients a day that need that inpatient care. Those patients will come to Easton for their care. We need to build a unit that meets all the code and regulations for a behavioral health unit because it needs to be secluded, needs to be safe. So there's many, many conditions that have to be met in order for that to happen. That's what we're going to be doing over the next year or so, is building that unit in the Easton Hospital. But as far as behavioral health services goes, inpatient care is just one aspect of the continuum of care for behavioral health. There's a lot of outpatient and intensive outpatient procedures that are done through counseling and through therapies that are offered. Our plan is to have one location for inpatient beds, but five different locations for the outpatient services that we provide because we recognize that behavioral health or mental health issues are incredibly, are increasing rapidly on the shore like they are in the rest of the country, and we have to be at the forefront of addressing those issues as much as possible. Telemedicine also plays an important role in the management of behavioral health patients' care. So five counties worth of bridge clinics, outpatient centers, so that our patients can have access either before and after they're discharged or just on an outpatient basis. So it's very, very important. Thank you for bringing that up, and that's part of our continuum of care as well.
You good, man?
Yeah, sorry.
I just got one question. Thanks, Mr. Cozell, for coming today and talking to us.
My pleasure.
I just had a quick question. You mentioned about relocating beds to Easton's facility. I've got many residents who live in my ward who are nurses and other jobs at Easton Memorial, and they're, they've mentioned to me in the past that they kind of feel a little, you know, overwhelmed at this moment in time. Will there be new staff being added when those beds come in? And I know, I'm assuming a lot of the concerns about short staff might have something to do with the finances that you mentioned earlier, but I know that's something that they have mentioned to me in the past.
Thank you for that question on behalf of the team that work with us. So when the new beds come from Cambridge to Easton, staff will be added to support those patients. In the hospital business, we pretty much run on ratios. How many providers to patients are appropriate? And depending on how sick the patient is, depends on how many providers or nurses, techs care for that patient. So as an example, if you've got an ICU patient, one of the sickest types of patients we see, the ratio of nurse to patient is much lower than it is for other patients. So in an ICU setting, you have one nurse for two patients. As patients go from intensive care down to medical surgical care, which is less security, you could be one nurse for five patients in that ratio. So because it's safer, it's safe. Safety is paramount for how we staff. It's consistent for the most part throughout the country. You know, there's not a lot of variation in how hospitals staff for patients that we see, and you have to adhere to those ratios if you're going to provide a safe environment for our team and if you're going to provide safe, quality care for our patients. So what we do is if we add or subtract beds, or daily census fluctuates regularly. or daily census fluctuates regularly. This many patients, more come through the ED, more get admitted. We have to fluctuate our staff to ensure that we can meet that, uh, level of patients, and meet those ratios for each type of patients that we care for. Where we run into challenges, though, is, we don't staff for a full hospital, just like businesses don't staff for full occupancy. We don't staff for a full hospital. We, we staff at basically 70 to 75% full, because that's about what we run on average. When we have surges of patients that come through our ED, and we go from 75% occupancy to 85% occupancy, or 90, or even 100, that's when it's challenging to find the staff to max up to that capacity in that short period of time. We've got a lot of plans for pool provide, you know, pool staff, where we can just call them and say, we've got extra shifts needed because we've got more patients. Can you come in today? We'll pay you a premium. We've got overtime and agency utilization, so we've got different ways to address that. But that's where the biggest problem is, is when we have a surge of patients that we can't staff up to quickly enough, um, we use those resources to try to do that. So, but, but anytime, for any number of patients, we follow the ratios as best as we humanly possibly can with techs, nurses, and, uh, with providers as well. Critically important, because you won't get a safe experience if that happens. Our team members will not allow it, because they don't want to work in that unsafe environment. And, um, in that regard, then, you don't have a hospital system that's caring for your community. So, we won't let that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and enlightening us a little bit.
Appreciate it. Thank you for giving me so much time. I hope I didn't take most of your day. I know you're going to be here till tomorrow morning. I saw the agenda. You've got a lot, a lot of things on.
Well, it helps us because we get lots of questions.
Do you? Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm, uh, Mayor Willie, thank you for asking me to come, and I'm-
Sure.
-available anytime you need me to. If you'd like me to help with the rest of your agenda, I'd be happy to, but it's really nice out. Is it okay if I go now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Next on our agenda is Resolution 6121. And this is a resolution of the Town of Easton extending the executive order 202003, previously issued by the Mayor, adopting additional measures related to previous state of emergency declaration for the Town of Easton for COVID-19. Um, this, this one we vote on. Uh, any questions on this particular proclamation?
Motion for approval. Resolution number 6121.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to vote on those.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Silverstein?
Aye.
Mr. Avatama?
Yep.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Now, the next part of our agenda is extremely complicated. Ms. Vanenberg will walk us through that. This involves the, uh, annexation of Dutchman Lane, and a whole bunch of complications that I didn't know existed when I was pushing to get this thing done.
Well, uh, hopefully I can simplify it. It def- it definitely looks a little overwhelming when you see it on the agenda that way, and it was a little overwhelming to create all of that. But, um, when Stony Ridge was annexed back, I think it was in the 70s, in order to connect to the town, there's a little paper street called Third Street that was attached to connect it to the town. So, as we were looking to annex Dutchman's Lane, um, when you do an annexation, you can't create an enclave, which an enclave is where there's county land surrounded by all town land. So, in order to avoid creating an enclave with annexing Dutchman's Lane, we had to do a couple of things. One, we had to annex, we have to annex a residential property, um, owned by Mr. Covington, that is shown there on the property. And the other thing we have to do is we have to de-annex the Third Street paper street that we used to connect previously. So, um, all of that will then allow Dutchman's Lane, basically from where Mr. Covington's property starts there, annex. There is a small piece of it that already is in town, right across from the Stony Ridge entrance, I think. And then, but it'll basically allow Dutchman's Lane to be in town from Route 50 the whole way down to past, um, Easton Club East. And the reason to annex that road in is so that the county can transfer that property to the town, and the town would then own Dutchman's Lane and be responsible for the maintenance of that property. So, we have to annex it first, and then we can accept it, um, so that the town can, can maintain that property. So, the legislation that's before you is to annex the area that we just talked about. It's also to apply zoning to Mr. Covington's property, and that would be the R10A zoning, which is consistent with the zoning that's around that area. Um, one of the pieces of legislation is to de-annex the Third Street, but because, um, the county does not want to take over Third Street, so we are going to close the Third Street. It is improved a little bit. I don't know if you'd call it improved, partially improved, for a tiny segment of it, um, but mostly is unimproved. But it is used for access back to, um, there's some stream maintenance that occurs there on the, the town and the property on the other side of that, as well as, um, there's some utilities that run there. So, we want to reserve a utility easement and an access easement to continue to perform that stream maintenance and to continue to access the utilities, but we don't really need it to be a public road. So, we're closing it as a public road, but, um, maintaining that ability to access that area. So, there is legislation that, that does that as well. And I think that covers all of the, the items. Um, the county also has legislation that they will be considering, because they need to authorize the conveyance of Dutchman's Lane, so they have legislation to do that. And because the Covington property, um, none of the town zoning districts match up perfectly with the county districts. So, even though they're, it's currently, I think it's town residential in the county, um, it doesn't match up perfectly with the R10A. Our R10A does allow increased density because we have water and sewer, so we do need a zoning waiver to apply that zoning. So, the county is also introducing legislation to apply a zoning waiver. So, the combination of all of those things have to happen simultaneously. Um, and they're proceeding through their process, and then we need to proceed through our process. We do need to have a public hearing on many of these. Um, and with all of the timelines factored in, I, uh, I believe the public hearing will be at the July 6th Town Council meeting, um, on all of the legislation. So, for tonight, this is just an introduction to all of this. All we need to do is accept the petition for annexation, introduce all of the legislation, schedule the public hearing for July 6th at 5:45, and then refer it to the Planning Commission, because they need to make a recommendation on this. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Well, I guess the first thing we're going to do is set up a public hearing for July the 6th at 5:45.
Yep.
Now, all, all of these will be then referred to the July 6th hearing?
Yes. We will have a public hearing on all of them then.
Okay, and I, I need to read each one of these out?
You should probably start by accepting the petition for annexation, and then read each of those for introduction.
Yep.
Okay. That's 6119.
So, the petition for annexation is just called a petition for annexation. So, you would just accept that. Um, it, it was submitted by Talbot County, as well as the property owners and the residents that also signed up on it.
You need a motion a second on that?
I make a motion to accept the annexation petition.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then you just need to introduce each of the legislation and, and read those.
Okay, so you're going to get to hear my lovely voice for about half an hour.
That's right.
Okay. First one's Resolution 6119, a resolution, resolution to annex certain lands owned by Talbot County, Maryland, and Mr. Harry R. Covington, II, located on the east side of the intersection of US Route 50 and Dutchman's Lane, consisting of 7.714 acres of land, more or less, into the Town of Easton, and to provide for the terms and conditions of the annexation. And that will be moved to the July 6th meeting. Ordinance number 751, in ordinance of the Town of Easton, amending the official zoning map of the Town of Easton to apply R10A residential zoning district to certain lots of, or parcels of land annexed to the Town of Easton by Resolution number 6119, located along Dutchman's Lane, a consisting, consisting collectively of 7.681 acres of land, more or less. That will be carried over July 6th. Resolution 6120, a resolution of the Town of Easton, amending the charter of the Town of Easton to detach certain territory located to the east of Route 50 and known as Third Street, consisting of .579 acres of land, more or less. That will be moved over to July 6th. Ordinance number 750, in ordinance of the Town of Easton, authorize the Town of Easton to accept a portion of Dutch's Lane from Talbot County, Maryland. And that also will be moved over to the July 6th meeting. Ordinance 753, in ordinance of the Town of Easton, terminating the town's right to improve Third Street, a partially unimproved street currently in the Town of Easton, but in the process of being detached from the Town of Easton, but retaining an access and utility easement over Third Street, and authorizing the execution and delivery of quick claim deeds or other instruments of conveyance by the town to the neighboring property owners. And that also will be considered on our next meeting.
Now, they just need to all be referred to the Planning Commission for its recommendation.
Okay.
Any motion for that?
Sure.
Make a motion to refer all of these ordinances to the Planning Commission for their recommendation.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion carry.
That wasn't so bad.
No. Um, a little bit difficult with the mask on. Uh, the next review of invoices totaling 913,768.10. Motion approved?
Motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carry. Did we get any public comments or questions? Well, I think it's safe to adjourn. Have a motion adjourned. So, move.
Second.
You adjourn.